Yeah, but this was thrown in.
Don Paul Lilly Chief started the whole thing.
First name is.
Twenty-five years ago.
Beginning of October. People are dropping.
Handbuck.
It's on the bottom. Highlight the power. I'm driving. You'll see my presentation.
Especially here in Tennessee. I realize Massachusetts as well.
Do you do allegiance usually?
Bushes.
Oh, you're going down there, okay.
The Bucker, the Bucker people. In Massachusetts, you know, the bottom.
Hey, Connie's looking at me. I got one minute. This is off the internet.
Come back down, hit the ground, went up like this and then sat back down on the ground.
Did you already start?
They said Denise.
Oh, never mind. Oh, I gotta get the agenda up. All right, Dan, here we go. Hey, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you and welcome to the six PM edition of North Syracuse School Board meeting. Like to begin with a moment of silence for the following. Brandon DeFabio, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Alyssa Nikki Fiorello, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Fay Fluno Kirsch, a graduate and retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Molly Schwartz, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Norman Ferguson, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Vicki Hinnerwaddle, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. June Demachowski, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna begin the meeting today with a presentation from the Allen Road Elementary School Building Planning Team. Gonna turn it over to members, members to lead here. Thank you. Thanks for having us here. Thanks for giving us a little month reprieve there so we could get our act together even more so and kind of present to you. With me is Darlene Faboda and Katrina Wheeler, both part of our building planning team. And a number of BPT and staff members. Have everybody here supporting our presentation. A little bit different tonight than some of the presentations. I'm not sure I haven't viewed. Certainly for us is focused a little bit more on process. How we've gotten to the place of what our focus is. Walk you through some demographic information first. Our school profile. Currently around four hundred and eleven students, four sections, attendance rate ninety-six. And that is currently at ninety-six. For this year. Graphics fifteen percent for students with disabilities last year. Kind of share with you some of our academic performance data. With this graph, you can see we're gonna layer on a few things. Our ENL population over the past five years. It doesn't look like a sharp rise to that. That small subgroup that started many years ago has thirteen students coming over from Smith Road. Like dip there. Sisro Elementary, and you can see the next year it's already climbing again. So this percentage has really grown over the years. Next, kind of looking at our free and reduced lunch rate. Again, five years, you can see a huge trend. Attic change, especially, you know, when I think of shifting. Markedly below that. Five years, looking at that window. So that demographic is seeing. And when you look at our academic performance, this is just taking a couple of the assessments and taking a look. ELA three scores over the past five years. Adding fourth grade onto that, fourth grade ELA. Slight dip to forty-four, then up to forty. Why show you this? I know it's only one assessment, but I think that the message that I hope to convey in giving you this academic performance data. While you might expect, or while some people might assume that as your demographic makeup change. 劇性 increase in poverty or in. Language learners, you'd expect possibly for the academic performance. Quite the opposite. Academic performance rise. And I mention that not as a hat us in the back, look at us, but I want you to make that connection hopefully. I do over these past years with our building goals and with our professional learning community work in the building. Direct result of the collaborative work that this. On your grade level teams, roster grade level teams, special areas. So three goals that we focused on, and we've kind of taken a three-year approach to this. And I want to mention the process as much as. Content of them or what the focus. Kind of filtered this through our summer BPT work. We filtered through this lens of looking at the demands, the constraints and the choices that you have. Have to do, what do we have to accomplish? And then the constraints, what kind of holds us back from that? So then as a result of those two variables, what choice do you have? What choices do you make? What can you? Time, your resources. So, you know, the demand is to accomplish those four district priorities. But for us, we spent a lot of time this summer talking about the difference between goals and objectives. Didn't want to say it's to improve tier-one instruction because really it's greater than tier-one. It's tier-two, it's. All those tiers across three years in your building, what you're talking about is ensuring proficiency. Global goal is to ensure proficiency in ELA and math. Across those years. So the first piece was looking at these, these essential standards, friendly language, unit plans created, common assessments. Constraints are obviously time, resources, understanding. Choices were around which content area a grade level team wanted. Which of those initiatives they wanted to have as their focus area? How they were going to implement that? What the timeline would be and what their assessment would be. Probably heard this referred to in the past, when you hear professional learning community work as what are we tight on and what are we? One this year, the building planning team and myself sent the message to staff that what, where we are tight is it is same standards at a grade level. Same assessments that you're gonna use to assess. It's that idea of guaranteed and viable curriculum. You're loose on is saying you can select this year whether you're gonna focus on math. And look at which of those steps in the process you're at. Are you at identifying the essential standards? Development place? Look at how you're going to implement that. You can look at your timeline, assessments you're gonna use. So we. Really what we are tight on across the entire building and what we are loose on where. Levels have that autonomy to shape the work across the year. So I say all that, Mrs. Faboda's gonna share here with you. You can look at the five grade levels and what the work they did and you'll see a great deal of similarity and then subtle differences because that.
So what we've done is we've just compiled some information from most. We're in different places, but we all understand the process that we go through very well. Terms of identifying. I can speak specifically for. We're working on the. Grade level, or some grade levels are choosing math.
Second goal, again, we. Kind of said, if. Concerned choice not to call it the SEL goal because SEL is not a verb. You know, we want to have a healthier social emotional learning community in Allen Road. Call it the SEL goal. You dilute it, you do the work, I think, when you, when you try and give it that. So if we're strengthening our. Environment at Allen Road, for us it was a focus on strengthening a culture of engagement and empathy.
Um, we actually, I could speak to third grade. We were. Happens that we started. Went from there, which is actually starting to. Empathy, there are postcards. Be mailed home.
As we focus on this, you know, some of this is. Quick story. We've taught, we had a great deal of conversation about empathy not being. Help me pick up my books when I dropped them, you're so nice and we're gonna recognize. Wrestle with, are we giving recognition or prizes or things like that for catching students being good? Us, it's this idea of unsolicited. Had a student recently at our holiday chorus concert who became upset before the concert started with the lights and the noise down and came off the risers and was very emotionally upset. Concert finally started, we had everything calm down, back up on the risers and we noticed that the girl next to her reached out. Said, only three songs left, you can do it. Only two more songs, we're almost there. And after the chorus noticed that, that's something that we would recognize with the postcard because it's unsolicited. I understand where you're at and what you're going through. At that more simplistic. It's an English language learner and they need. Is that they're not understanding the text very well and sits down beside him to help him understand the question. Acts of empathy, we think.
We're also working towards sustaining. PLC. And we include.
Again, we can very easily. Put it down to that type of abbreviation sometimes. Out is really sustaining. Goals are really about strengthening, furthering the healthy culture that exists at Allen Road. Circling back to that attitude. Culture has resulted in. So to summarize, and you can take any questions, specifics that you'd like to ask. These pieces that we want to make sure you hear from the bill. In this journey. Our journey, we're improving performance while the demographics are changing. Designing goals that sustain a culture, not only reach a number. Focus on process as much as content. Goals define where we're tight and loose and are a product of reflection and self-assessment. We're adapting versus adding. New is where it's needed. Mindful of everyone, their needs. Health, the students, the adults, the parents. At our journey, as the logo says. Absolutely.
Hello. Great presentation, thank you. You, I'm glad you interjected with the story of the little girl that's white. How old was she? Nine, it's impressive, I know adults who aren't capable of that. And sending a note home to recognize a child was wonderful and well thought of. What about letting the other kids know what she did to let them know this is what empathy truly looks like?
Yeah, we, we really wrestle with this a great deal because we're trying to find balance, I think, between. Tried to teach the students what empathy. Anybody happen to bring any of the postcards tonight? All right, so we have examples. We even wrestle with. Thank you very much. Need a bank of commons to make. Do we have? This second trimester is actually. Last year we began with that focus on the entire wheel with. I just, I'm gonna go quick, it's just a comment. Because you were very thorough, Mr. London, you didn't leave me any questions. So I want to commend you on your continued work on the common assessments. I think that's a critical piece of that and I'm happy to see your, the autonomy you're allowing the grade levels to work on the different subject areas depending on what they feel they need. Is that what I heard? Okay, great. And the inclusive nature of the PLCs, that's a question I know I've asked in the past and I see her getting as many different members involved in that as all. So I have one question on, because something jumped out at me on your bullet points that I liked unless I don't understand it. Adapting versus adding, new is where it's needed. Can you get, somebody give me just a little example of that because that, I think I like that. For me, a good example is the SEL work. Adding on a whole nother program, we've adapted that to say. Okay, great. Empathy is gonna be where we're gonna build. Not gonna have every grade level come up with something. I will have something that'll. Instead of just layering on, kind of like the Christmas tree where you're adding. Tap some of the things we have in place. I think that's great. I've seen so much initiative overload in this profession, it's good to hear that.
I'll add to that a little bit. When I think of adapting versus adding, I know. Worked a lot on how to function as a P.O. Those foundations down. And we're able to say.
Yeah, no one does. Thank you. Further questions?
I'm just glad, Dave, you talked a little bit about socioeconomic. Matt and George and myself live in the neighborhood, so one-third of your school board lives in your neighborhood and I listen to the music when they're out there in June doing orchestra and so forth. Can you tell me how many AAS teachers, psychologists, I want to make sure that you have enough staffing now that we have more and more needy children at Allen Road? Can you tell me a little bit about the staffing with the special?
So increase we've seen this past year was that we went. Second AAS teachers, that was up to two full AAS teachers. As far as CTDs, we're at four for the five levels, so we still have one that's split. Who they're splitting out? Sorry, for, oh, for counseling staff. So we, we have a full-time psychologist, again, when I first arrived at Allen Road, it was a half-time psychologist and we, we go through them almost every year because it was a stepping stone. So now we have full-time, it's somebody who's. Counseling standpoint, that's the area Dan and I have talked about this. Still are only, you know, about half-days a week for school counseling, you know, with company. At a pep in school council. Have a day or so where, other than school psychologists, we don't have any counselors. So that's definitely a challenge.
I believe our.
I want to definitely thank, I try to do this to every presentation, the planning team, and I don't know if there are members out here in the planning team. Thank you for your time and your effort because I was on it one time at Cicero. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of energy and you look at a lot of data, so I thank you. And if Olivia or David could send a list of these to Connie, I'd like to see who was on the planning team, a list of them. Just to tell you a little bit about your school, I went to a basketball game on Friday night and I sat behind the bench and that's where the Allen Road boys were. Well behaved, their parents were up above, so really they knew they had a little, you know, time to do whatever. When they stood up for the national anthem and I wish I knew which boy sang it, put his hand on his heart and he sang it. You know, the adults weren't doing that, but this little boy from Allen Road looked at that flag and did that. That tells you about your school and, and the things. And David, to end up, thank you for all your time and your energy. When I saw that sign on the marquee, I had to take a picture and, and send it to Dan because you have done for that school. Thank you. And as I said, now you're gonna come to the district and do the same kind of things for more schools, so thank you.
Okay, thank.
One more quick, Dave, if you can just mention what, what Bob said about the sign is absolutely correct, but you shared something with me earlier today and I know, but if you can just share with the board, because I thought that was special.
Have, as of Friday, the staff has been incredibly gracious. Fries breakfast and we had an. They, they gave me some. I'm humbled by that, but I guess, Dan, the message I'd like to say with that is I, and I said this to staff before I left, I can't. Shave the staff's willingness to come. That culture is not done. Kind of why I wanted to make sure that we were. Thank you. Okay, following up, we have the, we have a 2021 budget update from Mr. Where is he? There he is, Mr. Keegan.
That's a tough presentation to follow, great job, Mallon Road. Well, good evening. Tonight, we're gonna talk about, as we have scheduled in our, on our agenda, we're gonna talk about the governor's budget proposal, which we all got a chance to, to look at last week. The preliminary tax cap calculation, this will be your first look at our tax cap calculation, it's, it's preliminary. And we'll talk more about that. We're gonna take a look at our fund balance and reserves again, and this one will be a projection of what we think they're gonna look like as of June thirtieth of 2020. And we'll finish as usual with our budget process timeline. Lot, lot of words up here, so let me, let me try to cut through, cut through the bullet points. The governor's budget proposal does in fact increase education funding about three percent. He is increasing foundation aid by about five-hundred-and-four million. There's another two-hundred million that's allocated to targeted high-needs schools of which we are not one. So that's, just wanted to point that out. The proposal falls well short of the $2 billion increase that the Education Department was looking for. And the governor has proposed some interesting changes. This third bullet point, there's been some talk about changes to educational, special education funding and the consolidation of a number of the reimbursements. But the runs that we received did not reflect that, so we've got some more research to do to find out what that, what that looks like. The aid runs did reflect the governor's proposed, proposed consolidation of certain expense-based aids, including BOSI's aid and instructional materials, hardware, software, library, textbook and stuff like that into foundation aid. Now, I, I, I'm concerned about this because it does create some confusion around the whole financial, the foundation aid issue. To be clear with people, expense-based aids like BOSI's, it's the concept of, hey, as long as the aid you're spending meets the parameters of state aid or, you know, the State Education Department, you'll get an aid based on what you spend. And it's not like that means you can just spend as much as you want and you get, get as much aid as you want. But it's based on, in some cases, your enrollment, in others, based on, you know, the needs of your population and the, and the programs that you spend money on and you get a reimbursement for that. So that's concerning that the governor's kind of putting all that in one pot and again, we'll, we'll see that and talk about that more in a, in a minute. There is some additional proposals around charter school tuition and, and whatnot that again, don't affect North Syracuse. So bear with me, I've got three slides. Normally I show this to you in one slide, so let's just take our time and, and go through. So one of the things we look at is this thing, the first column there is called the, the gen report. It's, it's really an aid project, projection for this year, the nineteen-twenty school year for the, the state aid. What do we really expect to receive? And how does that compare to what the governor's proposing? And this is probably the most important slide. What do we expect to get this year and what is the governor proposing? So I've got some red lines there. The red lines are the lines the governor's trying to consolidate. He's consolidating all of those lines into foundation aid. So you might look up at foundation aid and go, wow, a sixteen-point-four percent increase, that's awesome. Well, there's a hundred percent decrease in three lines below, so, you know, it kind of all washes out. At the end of the day, the total without building aid is a two-point-four percent increase in non-building aid-related, you know, aid. Building aid's going down, but that's okay. We've, we've known that that was the case and the timing of that is actually good and I'll talk about that more in a moment. But net, 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 when you compare what we expect to get this year with what the governor's proposing, we're looking at about a two-point-one percent increase or a little shy of a million and a half dollar increase in state aid. Let's look at the next slice. So the next slide compares the approved budget. We all know the approved budget, that's what the board approved, that's, that's what the, the governor and the legislature agreed on. And we all know the approved budget, that's what the board approved, that's, that's what the governor and the legislature agreed on at, you know, at the close, April 1st of last year. That's what the board approved and the voters approved, and so that's a number very familiar to us, and it's, it's helpful to look at that compared to the executive budget. And there's a couple items in here, I think, that we should, we should just touch base on. So the first one is that excess cost. It's, it's private and public, and just to refresh everybody's memory, that's our special aid, our special education aid. And, and so that's paid to us, you might have heard us talk about the stack process. We look at all of the services we provide our special ed population, and we actually provide, prepare a stack form for each of those students, you know, talking about what the costs are that we've incurred. And then that is the base, that's filed with state ed, and that's the basis for the special ed aid. And you're going to notice here that, wow, we thought we were going to spend $2.9 million. We actually, the governor's showing that, you know, that he's going to give us $4.4 million next year. Well, that's because we've had a significant increase in the, both the needs of our population, and, and Dan, jump in here if you want to talk a little bit about this, but also our more inclusive model, some of the things we're doing. And so, we're, we're getting more aid because we're spending more money, and you don't see the spending more money piece here, but that's a factor, and Dan, I don't
One of the things that Don and I talked about is, and as you've seen from board meetings, we've added additional programs, we've added additional services. We, we have either students being designated and/or moving in, which is causing increased costs mid-year, beginning of the year, things that are not budgeted at the time. And we have, I think we even have an addition of .2 OT added for this board meeting. So there are things that continue to happen, and I think it was reflective in the Allen Road presentation, as far as they had several grade levels that do have one C.T.D. teacher, but there are a grade level or two that are split. And when you end up with a split, it's because those students in that grade level have increased, forcing it to be broken into two different classes. So, we keep incurring those type of things, along with, we did add four counselors last year in our, in our budget for this year, and I think Allen Road did express that they are still one of two buildings that are still with a part-time, and that's another area that we'll need to shore up.
I think one thing that's important when we think about excess cost aid and the monies we spend on special education, it doesn't really go through a budget filter like, hey, we didn't budget that, we can't do this. You know, we have our committee on special education, our CPSC and our CSE, we have our stack process, and we like to think that there's integrity in that process, that kids are getting evaluated, and they're getting the services they need. And, and the consolation as a district is, when we spend money to support our special needs population, we get additional aid. And you're seeing that play out here in this, in this presentation. So, let me, let me go to the next view, and again, last, last little slice of this is, is, we always look at, again, back to that, this is what we thought was going to happen when the budget started, and this is what actually is going to happen. And again, you see that big spike in excess cost, $1.7 million more in that line alone. A couple of the other lines, you know, we're getting a little less aid in BOSI's than we thought we'd get, and a little more aid in transportation, and so you see all that, that net out. But I think at the end of the day, the number that we, and the number I've always presented to you, by the way, in, in these presentations, is this first slide, that, the first set of numbers. This year, we're going to get $70.1 million in state aid. Next year, we're going to, according to the governor's proposal, we're going to get 71.6. It's about a $1.4, $1.5 million increase, or 2.1%. And again, the governor's consolidating some line items. So let's, let's just touch really quick, I know this is a topic we keep hitting, but we just have to keep remembering that there is this thing called foundation aid. It's, it's about providing a sound, basic public education for everyone across the state. There's a formula that was developed that, that has not been followed, and it's cost districts like North Syracuse a lot of money over the years, and you can see the shortfalls. I, I think this would be fundamentally a different issue if we were receiving the money that we should be receiving in accordance with that formula. Remember, 2/3 of the districts in the state are receiving either the amount they should receive or more in foundation aid, and we're receiving less. It's, it's having a huge effect on us. Well, let's talk about the implications, though, of the governor's budget proposal. Again, I mentioned, foundation aid continues to be an issue. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that the governor's decision to consolidate these is really just going to confuse the issue. I don't know what the implications would possibly be on expense-based aid. I, I'm hoping it doesn't operate like foundation aid, where it's all fixed. I don't know how that'll work if, if we need to spend more money in a category, and we don't have the assurances that we're going to, we're going to be able to support the programs we're spending more money on. It could, it could be disastrous. So we're going to have to wait and see more about what the governor has to say about that, and what the legislator, legislators have to say about that. We did anticipate, we've anticipated it all along, we work very closely with fiscal advisors, this drop in building aid. It actually works out well with the, with the renovation of Bear Road and the roof projects coming on, because that aid will drop off, but we'll, as those projects get in full swing, we'll, we'll be aided on those projects. Our projected state aid increase with the governor's proposal, as I said earlier, is about 2.1%, or about $1.5 million. And it, it doesn't appear to be adequate to balance our 2021 budget. It's early, but let me, let me share some things with you, and I want to, I want to share this with you in a very positive light. I don't, I don't want there to be any negative connotations on this. We, so look at this little table at the bottom to better understand the gap. We entered into negotiations with our bargaining units, and we knew, we had data that showed that our teachers were paid at the bottom of large suburban school districts here in central New York, with a tightening labor force, with a, a much more competitive market, and frankly, we've got an aging workforce. We're going to need to attract teachers to our school district, and, and I know the board knows this, I'm kind of preaching to the choir here. We made a decision to make sure that we, we gave people raises that would at least close the gap a little bit within the market, so that we could afford to hire competitively teachers. So, you're seeing that, and that's teachers and other bargaining units that we've given a 3.65 raise to this year. Health and related benefits, that data comes right out of the Health Research Institute. By the grace of God, we've really done well with our health benefits. We have a really good health oversight committee, and, and we've got some good partners that we work with, and we, we hope that we have some good experience. But that is the number that has been nationally published as, as the 2020 medical cost trend. Teachers' retirement system, I've said this before to the board, we're very fortunate to be in New York State. We've got an excellent T.R.S., our teachers' retirement system, very well managed, fully funded. And for the last five years, we've benefited from the fact that those rates have come down, those funding rates have come down. And, and that's helped us build our reserves, shore up our balance sheet, invest in certain things, and, and build up our fund balance. But now that cycle is turning around a little bit, and we're seeing that, you know, we're going to look at some increases in our teachers' retirement, and our report, employee retirement system as well. So, 78.4% of our budget is people-related costs. We're a people-based business, and I just wanted to point out that we've got some increases in our core costs that are outstripping our 2.1% increase in state aid, and I'll talk to you about the tax cap in a minute.
Just a question on those, two retirement numbers, of those, what you're showing me there is a
Yeah, that's taken
percentage increase from budget, on, on the impact on the budget, it's not the published rate on payroll.
Yeah, so let me, it is, let me, let me tell you how I calculated it, because I thought that question might come up.
All right.
I took the 8.8% we spend today, and I used the 10.25%, I took the difference, and I took that difference divided by the 8.8, that's 15.69. Now, I know that rate's not final yet, and, so that's a 15.69% increase in that one cost component. It might only be a rate increase of 2% or less than 2%, but you get the idea. It's kind of like when we talk about, you know, we talk about this stuff in the tax cap, it's actually an expense increase of that amount. But I, again, I want to, I want to, I want to leave this slide on a positive note, saying, we're in a people-based business, we have to pay our people competitively, we think that's what we've, we've done. And, and it's just a significant component of our cost, and therefore, I, I say that it's possible we're going to have a budget gap, and that it's possible this state aid that the governor's proposing is inadequate to, to close that gap. And more to come on that, or very early in the process. Is that okay if I move on to the tax cap?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so let's talk about the tax cap. It's, it's the standard formula we've been looking at. Again, it's preliminary, because a couple of our numbers, I'll give you, and you might say, well, what's preliminary about it? We are always looking at those pilot revenues. So remember, pilot revenues are payments in lieu of taxes. So if a business moves into town, and, and by the way, the district doesn't negotiate these, but people move into the different towns, our different towns, and they negotiate these pilot agreements, say, we're going to create a bunch of jobs, you know, we want to, we want to deal on our taxes. And so, so what ends up happening is that they pay less than their full load of taxes, and so that impacts our tax cap, how we think about that. And right now, it's just a little early to have the final pilot number. So we're working with our attorneys at Bonchannica King to get that number finalized, and that number may move a little bit. Other things, the tax levy for capital, as you know, we've got a lot of moving pieces here with capital projects. We may see some fine-tuning in that number as we, as we approach the finalization of our tax cap. But what the, what this shows is last year's levy at the top, $90.2 million. We get that thing called the tax-based growth factor, and it's, it's really a great thing. What it does is, it says, how many, how much has your tax base increased, and it attempts to do that by new homes within your district. We've talked about this before, we're growing, and so we get to grow our tax base, and that's what that number is. I mentioned pilots and tax levy for capital, and they do impact us. I think we reported earlier to the board that inflation is running at 1.8%. So our, remember what the law says, is it can grow at 2% or inflation, whichever is less, so that allowable levy growth factor is 1.018, which is 1.8% increase in the Consumer Price Index. Brings us down to a tax levy limit of $92.5 million, an increase of about $2.3 million, or 2.6%. That's about $61 on a home of $100,000. Last year, the number was 2.77%, or about $66 for a home of $100,000 in our, in our district. So that's our preliminary tax cap. Again, 2.6% is the number we, we've got to work with as we embark on the budget process. Switching gears again, let's, let's think about our fund balance. So we were, we were very fortunate to end the year, June of 19, with a fund balance of $8.9 million, or 5.34% over what the state allows us to have. We're only supposed to have 4%. The board and the community, the board made a decision, the community supported a decision, to take some amount of that fund balance and appropriate it to the KWS Bear Road project. And so that project is about to begin, and by June, we'll have spent the, the $2.2 million, 2.2 million, $2,235,000 in connection with that project. We're going to have some excess revenues. I just talked about this a little bit, the special ed revenues for excess cost, that's bullet point two. So this is the additional state aid that's due primarily to higher-than-planned excess cost aid, the special education stuff that showed up on our, our runs that we were looking at. So that's a good, that's good news, that'll help our fund balance. And then we're going to have some estimated expenditures in excess of budget. So, think about that, I said earlier, we're getting all that excess cost aid because we're spending more on special education costs, and that's about $2.4 million more on special education costs, bullet point three. And, and then we're going to have some additional compensation costs due to our recent settlements, contract settlements, more than we planned, and it's going to be offset by some favorable variances in things like medical and retirement and utilities. And so, these are really rough at this stage of the game, but I think it's indicative of where we're going to be, and, and so I think we're going to end up at, with a reserve of about, fund balance, I should say, of about $6.5 million. Now, I'm, I'm swagging at this, I have no idea what our budget number's going to be, but I said, hey, it's likely that our budget could increase by as much as 3.5%. So that gives you an estimated percentage of budget by, of about 3.8% of our fund balance. A little lower than the 4%, but still a reasonable fund balance. Any questions on that? I know I threw a lot of numbers at you. Let's switch to reserves, then. So our reserves, the only movement in our reserves that we're anticipating, there's a couple of them that'll move between now and year-end. Our workman's compensation reserve, we'll keep truing that up based on the type of cases we have. So what you're seeing in tax surchiary and workman's comp right now, and general liability, are just that money's in the bank earning a little bit of interest, and you're seeing the growth in interest. As we get closer to the end of the year, we'll know more about our tax surchiary reserve and what we need to do to true that up, same thing with workman's comp. Our debt service reserve is there at almost $2 million, which is very healthy, and that'll help us with some of our debt service going forward. And then our capital reserve, we've done those roof projects this summer, and we're going to be doing the Bear Road roof project, and so we're going to have a lot of that reserve used up by the time we close the books in June. And so, that's, that leaves us with a reduction in our overall reserves from 9.6 to about $7.7 million. As we always end these presentations with kind of looking at the process. So I want to remind everybody that our principals and our directors and our cabinet are working on various pieces of the budget. All of our principals have keyed in their, their school-level, building-level budgets based on allocations we've given them. All of our directors are, are looking at some of the components of their budget. I recently met with Matt Irwin, for example, just on the, on the M&amp;O side. He's new to our organization, and he's really looking at his budget, and so, so a lot of, there's a lot of budget development going on behind the scenes. And next week, we'll be having meetings with our buildings and our, each of our, our primary, our elementary level, our middle schools, and our highs, our secondary level, junior high and high school, with all of the directors to dive into their budgets and, and better understand things like retirements and equipment needs and building needs, and, and kind of challenge them on some of their thinking. And so those meetings will happen next week, happen next week. And, and then, as you, as you see, we had today's meeting, we talked about the items on the agenda today, and then February, we're all working toward coming back to you on February 24th with our initial budget, kind of putting all the pieces together and, and seeing where we land. And that's kind of where we are with the process. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, so let's look at this budget process. So, next meeting, it'll be preliminary, it's initial, then we meet back other times, but you'll come back in March 16. I have concern about the final adoption of budget, April 6. Last year, the governor wants this budget by March 31st, but last year, the legislative went past. So I have concern, I mean, we'll have to watch this, that it may go longer. You know, he was bragging about, he had so many budgets on time, but last year it got broken. And there is a huge Medicaid problem in this state, huge.
We talked about last time, we have a $6 billion budget deficit statewide.
So, I'm just concerned a little bit, and, and I know we can change this as we go along. I know there's a deadline, you got to have it. Do you know what that deadline is, that you have to have a final budget? That's it?
That's it.
April 6.
Yeah, because we, you know, we, unless we do, we could do a special board meeting, we certainly could do, within our calendar, that's our last opportunity to meet the deadline.
Yeah, but because
We could do a
When I was down there before, it was April, it was later than that, I know it was, we had a special board meeting.
We can have a special board meeting if we need to, to do that. There's, there's another wild card, I think the board's aware of, that we're, we're not sure about the election process, and Connie and, Connie and I are talking to people, and
It's the primary on the 28th.
Because we've got, we've got a challenge with voting machines, so we're going to be standing by to see what state ed says about the timing of our, both our, our budget voting, and that could impact when the board has to finally adopt. Can I just throw something out? And Dan, I don't want to speak out of school here, so, so jump in if I say something wrong, but one of the things we've tried to do, and one of the advantages of the fund balance we have, and the reserves we have, and the process we have, we, none of us, there's not one person in this community, labor, management, parents, board, anybody, that wants to be sitting here at a board meeting trying to figure out how to close a gap by making crazy cuts in the 12th hour. I think we have to look at this budget process as a multi-year. So, we may not, we may have to adopt a budget and not know what the government, what the legislature's final budget's going to be. And we might come in, come through the process and say, you know what, we had a gap of X. We don't know what that gap is yet, but we had a gap of X. We decided to approve that budget, it might, it might eat into our fund balance a little bit, but that gives us 12 months, 13 months, to try to figure out how we're going to manage through that, and, and to contact our legislators and talk to our community and, and do some different things. I just, the days of, of sitting here with a pad and trying to figure out how to, you know, in the 12th hour, the reality of it is Albany, our process, working with Albany, it's really jam school districts. There's just not enough time to have thoughtful conversations. We're trying to put program, you heard Dave talk about process, and the Allen Road team talk about process, you know, we need to have a little bit more of a process orientation to this thing, and that might mean we just have to have a little long And that might mean we just have to have a little longer view. And Dan, I don't know if that's, you agree with it, or what I've said makes sense, or.
They're, they're really strapping us. And you see that there are those districts that are in fiscal distress and, that have been listed on, on the news. And it's, it's just making it more and more difficult to do the things that we need to do for our students each day.
Any other questions or comments?
No, you make a great point. I mean, there was, not too many years ago, they talked about multi-year budgeting from the state level, but it never went anywhere. And you probably remember when we used to, we didn't have the debt, well, the deadline was never met for April first. But we also had floating ability to have the vote day, which we no longer have. So we're really shackled here.
Yeah, yeah.
We had more time to work with legislators, get a late budget, and then move the vote date down the road.
And I think we're all feeling this. We've all collaborated to put out, to make changes and put new initiatives in place. And, and so, you know, we can't have a knee jerk reaction in one year. We need to, we need to be, to have a calm, responsible response to whatever the legislature comes through. And we'll work together on that. But, but thank you for listening, and we're to come.
Thank you. Hey, we are at the portion where we receive comments from the audience. We have three speakers signed up this evening. Just want to remind speakers, before I call them up, that if you've probably read the orange highlighted part on the sheet, you're limited to three minutes per speaker. Mrs. Gibson will, will be timing you, but I will start with, we have Jill Welsh signed up.
Hi.
Hello. She'll let you get there to sit, yes.
Oh, oh, well, if there's a mic, I might as well sit.
That's for the, mainly the streaming tool, you know.
Good evening. I am Jill Welsh. I have been a teacher in the North Syracuse School District for the past fifteen years. I'm also a graduate of this district, a parent of children in this district, and a taxpayer in this district. And the reason I say those things are because, as a teacher, parent, taxpayer, and former North Star, I'm letting you know that I am nervous. I am nervous for our district and its future. There are so many things being said from elementary to middle to high school by teachers, parents, and students. And nothing I hear seems to be positive lately. There are problems that need to be solved. I obviously don't have time to address them all in this allotted time. For example, the arguments on middle school schedules, elementary planning time, the CTD program, the sub shortage, the back rooms committee meetings, the waste of money being spent, the fights in the hallways, and the issues on the buses, things getting stolen in locker rooms, mental health concerns, the lack of support and respect, et cetera. So I'm just going to stick to the main reason why this amazing community behind me and I are here tonight. We are here tonight because of the devastating news that we, as Allen Road Elementary employees, were told on the morning of January fifteenth at a second thought thrown together meeting. The news left us shell shocked, heartbroken, and confused. We needed to vent, ask questions, cry, but we couldn't. We needed to pick ourselves up off the ground to stand in front of our precious young students like nothing just rattled us. This may sound dramatic to some of you, but not to us. We are a family, Allen Road employees, Allen Road parents, and most importantly, Allen Road students. We are united. We feel like part of our family was ripped from our arms, and a new family was just being tossed at us without a light jacket. We may be the smallest building in the district, but we have big hearts and big voices. We will advocate for all students and for ourselves at all time. We are not here to yell and complain. We are here to ask questions, offer suggestions, to be heard and to get answers before such huge decisions that are life changing are put in place. We understand this is not the forum for that. So we have compiled a list of those questions, concerns, and suggestions. And we invite you and encourage all of you to attend the listening session at Allen Road Elementary on February twelfth at six thirty P. M. Or please come to the staff listening session that will be scheduled soon. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We have Jamie Oswald.
Good evening. I had the opportunity to attend the public listening session at Lake Shore Road Elementary last week regarding the placement of third and fourth grade Bear Road students at Lake Shore Road Elementary during Phase One of renovations. The session was informational, helpful, and supportive of a successful transition for both Lake Shore and Bear Road students. With that said, some concerns that were voiced during this session included larger class sizes, longer lunch lines, drop off and pickup chaos, and loss of classroom space for music, art, and some related services. What surprised me the most was that our Lake Shore community seemed to be unaware of one of the biggest losses of space within our building, the relocation of four eight-one-one classrooms. These four classrooms support a community of students with some of the highest social and emotional needs who often have the most complicated home circumstances and have been in a program that has seen its fair share of challenges over the last few years. This program has endured four different building administrators over the last six years. It struggles to maintain classroom staff from year to year and has lacked consistency from one year to the next. These struggles are not due to a lack of effort or compassion for this program from the teaching assistants, teachers, building administrator, and special education department. This program will now be relocated to Allen Road, where the longtime building administrator will be moved to the district office and an interim administrator in place until a permanent replacement can be found. While Lake Shore Road Elementary may not be the homeschool for many of these, the children in this program, these students are a part of Lake Shore Road Elementary, and we should be concerned about their relocation and lack of program stability. While I am wholeheartedly supportive of the two most obvious talking points for this program relocation, which is a more centralized location within the district, resulting in much shorter bus rides for these students, the information being made available to the Lake Shore community about this program, about this program is lacking, and the relocation of this program feels like collateral damage in order to support the relocation of Bear Road students while their school is renovated. There have been a lot of behind the scenes conversations in support of a renewed focus on the eight-one-one program and the children this program serves. I ask the Board of Education and our administration to shine an intense spotlight on the students in the eight-one-one program and move forward in a way where decisions are deliberate, sensitive, and supportive of the children who desperately need a consistent and well-developed program. Instead of shorter bus rides and a centralized location, let us, as a district, talk about this program relocation as an opportunity for a fresh start and rebranding of the program, where the focus is person centered and student driven. Let's challenge ourselves to find solutions that are out of the box, maybe a little unconventional, but are deliberate, purposeful, and committed to improving the group, this group of students' educational experience.
Okay, thank you. And last, we have Susan Smith. And please, anything in writing you want to submit through Mrs. Gibson, we would be happy to have that, the transcript if you'd like.
Good evening. I am not as well-prepared as the previous two ladies. I signed up last minute just to reserve my spot in case I have something to say. And after listening to Jill Welsh and see all my Allen Road teachers here, I feel compelled to at least address the board and support my school and everything that is going on right now. First of all, I would like to say that Allen Road is a special place to not only myself, but many parents. We're proud to be an Allen Road parent. It's a special little place. We are very sad to see Dave London leave. I have a second grader, I have a sixth grader in Abroxborough. We've had all wonderful experiences, proud to be a North Star. My biggest concerns that are going on right now is these E and L students that are all of a sudden such a large part of our community being taken away and being told to go to another school. These are my son's friends. These are, you know, kids in our community. We invite these families to come into our school during our winter wonderland to share their culture and, and their experiences and let them know that they are a part of our school. You know, we embrace it, the diversity in our school, and we support it. I have concerns, just like the previous parent here, the lack of communication for my school. There was parents that received letters that told them that, you know, their kids were being moved from Bear Road or, you know, the eight-one-one program's leaving. But I didn't receive anything until today, that there was going to be a listening session next, in the next couple of weeks about what's, what's going to happen. I have, I heard it all through the grapevine before then. I have friends who are parents and teachers in Lake Shore. I know there's lots of stories about what goes on in a day-to-day basis. I understand it's a difficult program. It's something that, you know, our school is, and our district's doing the best to be able to handle. I have concerns about what that means for my son on a day-to-day basis, what the bus ride means, what, what words are being used in the hallway. It's, it's just a big change for, you know, overall, losing these kids, these, these E and L kids that are a part of our society, and taking in a program that I'm not sure we have the resources, we have the ability. It's just a, a large culture shock. And just like the previous parents said, it's all because Bear Road had to endure this, this change. I would encourage, you know, hopefully that we can find the best solution to this. But I just want to support my school, Allen Road, and the staff that, you know, hopefully we can find the best solution for this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Board of Education Committee reports. I will go to Mr. Crabtree.
All right, the Legislative Committee, it seems just a while back, but it was January eighth that we met. We discussed our budget assumptions. We spoke about, and we'll be talking about it, I think, for months, the foundation aid issue. We looked at the Board of Regents' proposal. And our next meeting is February twelfth at six o'clock. And we will have Derek Dorsey here, who is the Executive Director of Central New York School Board. We will also have Pam Hunter's top aide here and an aide from Senator May. So I would hope all the Legislative Committee comes to that. And then, of course, this coming Saturday, February first, I thank everybody that signed up to go, including our students and Don and, and Chris and Dan, because together we can tell them what North Syracuse needs. And the more of North Syracuse is there, the better we, that we are. So I'm looking forward to a meeting with our Assemblymen and our one senator this Saturday.
Okay, and I just wanted a brief report that the Audit Committee for the Board met last week. Myself, Vice President Marizio, our community member, Mr. Schusda, Mr. Keegan was there, and Mr. Clark from Darkanumo and Company. So just wanted to let you know that everything's fine. But I, if anybody wants to see the report, I like the way they put this, what they call a risk register together. I call it a dashboard, but he told me that's not what it is. But it gives you a kind of a color code to show what the, the risk tolerance is for the different areas that we have, not just governance, but I T., budget, finance reporting, and such. So it's, it's a nice page to look at if anybody wants to see that document. You can borrow mine, or I can see that we, Ms. Gibson has copies for you. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Crabtree, did you have an O C M?
Yep, real quickly, each of you receive a monthly report from me, so I'm not going to go through that at all. One thing that I wanted you to know, and I, I'm really, this is exciting, is our guidance counselors from the high school went to Thompson Road two mornings. And I'm going to pass this round, start with Mark, but this is the presentation that was given about all our great programs that we have at Bosse's, including the engineering program and our health profession, the new one, which is heavy equipment. And gave the, and also there's a list of all our students, which happens to be a hundred and thirty-two of our eleventh and twelfth graders, which is about ten percent, I'm guessing, of our student body, go for a half a day to Thompson Road to learn about welding or cosmetology, or my favorite, which is the food place where they culinary, where they make lunches and so forth. But I think this was an excellent way of showing our guidance counselors what Bosse's is really about. And they were excited as they took the tour to meet their, their students that are, are from C N S. And then the only other thing is our annual meeting. I know Michael will be there on April first. Will be, all the superintendents and boards are invited to see our budget, the Bosse's budget. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's comments.
Okay, it's been a few weeks, so I do want to first recognize, for those people that don't know Olivia, Olivia Kambs, who is filling in at Allen Road, is in the audience. Olivia, if you could just kind of give away for those people that don't know her. But she is a seasoned veteran, and we have used her in many different places. And we're glad to have you filling in for Dave right now and covering that building and leading them. So the first thing, I think you did receive something, Spelling Bee. We had a student advance, Nicholas Capice, advance to the next round of the Scripps Spelling Bee, which that is exciting. The other day, our Science Olympiad took third place and is going to states. We've had some interesting things happening at the athletic. We had Lake Shore Road girls won their elementary shootout at the varsity game. And if you were there for either the girls or the boys, it's exciting. And these kids are excited to be part of the program. And Connie Gibson, we had a student, Mike Washington, get a scholarship offer to Colorado State. So that was exciting news that was coming through. Boys hockey defeated Cavs in O T. six-five. North Syracuse Junior High School is going to be offering a competition, Vex Robotics, at February twenty-second. If you saw school, schools this morning, you may have seen Liverpool Middle School on, doing their Vex Robotics competition. So we're constantly looking to push those STEM activities. And last but not least, we had C N I Scholastic Art Awards. I don't, I can't even name all the students because there's at least thirty-eight or thirty-nine from C N S, another twenty-nine from the junior high. We were well represented as far as the arts at C N S, and I commend them all. They do a phenomenal job. And that is the end of my report.
Do we have other Board of Education comments? Yes, Terry.
Actually, I know a bunch of board members actually went to the junior high. Guys and Dolls performance sat behind Bob. And we have some pretty impressive, talented teenagers. There was, Bob and I were commenting on one of the leads. I'm like, that girl sounds classically trained, she's that good. And all the other, just the enthusiasm and the professionalism of the kids during the performance was, was very impressive.
Others, yes.
I, I have two comments and, and so forth. As you know, I live right across from the school. The buses are there before I'm up, but being retired teacher, you can sleep in. The school zone, okay, and George and I have talked about this before, you know. I could, I, if I was a policeman, I could stand out there and, I make a lot of money because of the speeding. In some school districts, and I, and again, this would be the town or the county, they have a sign, light, you see the light that flashes at six o'clock or seven o'clock? Opposite side, they, they put a lot of new signs on Allen Road this year. Sidewalks and crosswalks, so I kind of can go cross, crosswalk when I walk. I would like us to look into what light is. So the other side would be end of school side. And then down the other way, as you get close to Chestnut, if that's possible. Because that tells them exactly where does it end. Then I know we are going to get reports, and I would want reports about the construction. Where are you going to start in the spring? It's coming and so forth. Meeting by meeting. What happened last time, but I.
What happened last time, but I don't want to see anything like that happen this time. I want proper channels and where of where we constructed this, this in the cafeteria. The board needs to be aware of. The comment I want to make, and it just gives a positive comment, is I was at the boys' basketball game, and George was there, and Mark was there on Friday night. And again, I told you, I sat with the Allen Road boys, and they're phenomenal, so well-behaved. We can't say that about Allen Road, but it was a special night because 10 years ago, at, as Tim knows, we had one of the greatest. But 19-1 in the league, they won the championship. Every member but one came back Friday night. And I mean, you don't see these little Allen Road kids looking at these, you know, the older kids and so forth. And I was at that game with Dr. Melvin and Mrs. Melvin and George and Denise. We were at Utica Odd, and we were going against Utica Proctor, Dan. Because Dan's from that, you know, was in that area.
Oh, you worked there.
And didn't think we had a chance, and we were down two points with like four or five seconds left in the game, and one of the shortest guys on the team shot, got a three-pointer. I remember Dr. Melvin or whatever, but what a great night to bring those kids back, and they're always North Stars. That was great, Tim, and I don't know who was in charge of it. I'm thinking you had a lot to do with that. That was amazing, and that's what our school district's about.
Thank you. Okay, routine action items. I could get a motion for the consideration, the approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 6th. Motion from George, second from Terry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose, that is carried. If I get a motion for the consideration, a classification of special ed for disabled student placements of B, C, and D, C being the preschool disabled, D being home instruction program, so B, C, and D, please. Motion from Terry, seconded from Aaron. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose, that is carried. E, motion, please, put the acknowledgement of the business office reports in front of us. A motion from George, seconded from Mark. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose, that is carried. Discussion action items. If I get a motion for A, the recommendation to create a point-two FTE occupational therapist at Smith Road. Motion from Aaron, seconded from Terry. Any discussion or question on that? All in favor? Oppose, that is carried. If I could put B and C together, please, those are the non-resident tuition rates for 18, 19, and 19, 20. A motion to put those before us. Motion from Matt, seconded from Terry. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Motion to put D, appointment of data protection officer, before us. Motion from Karen, seconded from George. Any discussion? I just would ask, Don, I think we talked about that, just to explain what that person or position would do or oversee.
So, you know, there's a lot of, you, regarding the protection of private data, and one of the things that kind of Chris and Dan and I have kind of learned a little bit about is that it's really important that you have someone that's independent of the IT department kind of looking and saying, how are we doing on data private? And so much, so many of our applications are now out in the cloud, and so there are certain standards that those applications need to meet, and we're working very closely with BOSI's to ensure that the types of applications we're using meet those standards, and that we're doing everything we can to protect private data, student data, staff data, and whatnot. And we were so happy that Chris graciously volunteered to be our data protection officer by process of elimination, I think, by the fact that I couldn't do it because I'm too close, but Chris is going to do a great job with it, and we're really happy to have him provide that oversight.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, just one. Typically, the DPO is supposed to work, Joint Director of Technology. Considering we don't have one, is that person going to be directly working with you, or is it going to be somebody who's currently down in the IT office that has knowledge to day-to-day operations on our security?
I think it'll be, it'll be a combination of both. I think the one thing I probably failed to mention, we subscribe to a service with BOSI's, and so BOSI's is going to be help, leading us through that process of, you know, for example, they're vetting all of the various applications and helping us understand the process of data protection. So it'll be a combination of working with our network administrators down in the IT department, myself, and BOSI's, I think. You know, taking their leadership. Jason Clark at BOSI's has let up that coser, that service, and we're very thankful. It's kind of funny, they put the service together and they stop short of, they will not provide a DPO. They, the district needs to own the data, the district needs to own that responsibility, and so we'll be working closely with BOSI's on that. That answer your question, Mike, or is it good?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Oppose, that is carried. I'd like if I could get a motion to put E and F before us. Motion from George, seconded from Aaron. E being the amendment to the appointment of North Syracuse Central School District Insurance Plan Administrator for Exelis, and amendment to the appointment of District Health and Safety Committee. Any questions? Those are before us. All in favor? Oppose, that is carried. Appointment of purchasing agent, can I get a motion to put that before us, please? Motion from Matt, seconded from Terry. Any questions on that? All in favor? Oppose, that is carried. Acknowledgement of gifts, can I get a motion to put that before us? Terry, motion from Terry, seconded from Matt. Any questions on that? We have some violin, I wondered what a Bobby Locke case was, but there's some things I don't understand, but we thank them, and they'll be getting a letter from us. Any questions? Since I made comments, okay, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. And surplus of non-marketable equipment, excuse me. Motion to put that before us. Motion from Terry, seconded from Matt. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Those ovens aren't that bad a shape that they can't be repurposed?
Some of this stuff is super old equipment, yeah.
Were those from the food service or from fax, or?
I think those, these are food service ovens.
Okay.
We just got, we're actually just got some new ovens at a couple of our locations, and we're installing new ovens. So I didn't look at the list here, but I'm pretty sure, I know we just, just.
Yeah. Everything was non-marketable on the list today, yeah. Any other questions?
By the way, we've already spent a lot of money on repairs, you know? It's kind of like we get to the point where at some point you got to stop putting money into them, so.
All in favor? Oppose, carried. Can I get a motion to put the policy amendments and adoptions before us? Jay, motion from Terry, seconded from Mark. Any questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose, that's carried. Instructional personnel report, if I could get a motion, please, to put A before us. Motion from Terry, seconded from George. Any question on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose, that's carried. And B, support staff personnel report, a motion, please. Motion from Bob, seconded from Mike. Any questions?
I just want to make a comment. Thirty-four years for the custodian of Allen Road, John, does an awesome job, especially with the condition of Bear Road and the cable there, and then L. We wish them well.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Any other questions? All in favor? Oppose, that is carried. I'm going to put out a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of hearing a parental appeal of a superintendent's decision to review the employment history of three individuals and to review one legal matter relative to potential litigation, with action to follow only on the parental appeal. If I could get a second for that. Second from Mike, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose, carry. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion from Bob, seconded from Mike. Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor? Thank you, we're adjourned.
Yeah, good thing we still, we talked about maybe start at 5:30. Yeah, we have to start at 5:30.
But it's, yeah, it's a way to start.
Wow, okay. Well, that's a good thing to know. You should mention that.
To us, BOSI's, Chris, has got that job for us. Chris, Chris, here we go.
Chris was trying to like, I'm doing, and I don't have background, but I'm, you know, it's really just communicating, staying on topic, taking videos, and it's part of my job.